Meeting of the Lathir Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, to order. Let's all stand and for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call.
Roll call. Chair Pietrowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Koppas.
Here.
Secretary Hammond.
Here.
Board Member Julieta.
Here.
Board Member Cantor.
Present.
Board Member Stansbury.
Here.
And Board Member Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to, like, set them on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review it. If there are any questions, comments, or modifications suggested, we'll entertain those now. Hearing none, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the meeting minutes, regular meeting of March 26th, 2019. Everyone should have a copy, and any questions or comments on the meeting minutes or recommendations for corrections, we'll entertain those now.
Have none.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting of March 26th, 2019.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, and the minutes are approved. We will move on to the public comment section of tonight. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. Not seeing any, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business capital improvements For this item, is someone from the city staff going to step us through that this evening? Jill, is that?
Yes, good evening. Jill, basically, the question, we are happy to share with you the draft of the capital improvements plan for your review. We were under a bit of a time crunch with trying to obtain all of the necessary information for this document, so that's why it's a little bit incomplete in certain places. The mapping, we were having an issue with that, and so we just have this for discussion. I think you may remember, last year, we went through the process of having the subcommittee meet prior to the planning commission, and due to the lateness of getting the information gathered, and also due to the relatively few items that were being added this year, we felt like just getting it to you folks for review tonight, and then hopefully setting a public hearing for next month. We'll get this then to council in time for budgets to be finalized for this year. So, for the benefit of our new planning commissioners, the capital improvement plan is a six-year planning document for capital items in the city. The threshold for capital items is $5,000. So you will notice a couple items in here from the police department that were just a little bit under that. We left those in for now, but we probably will take those out when we're ready for the final document, just so there's not any confusion. But generally, these things are capital, they are equipment, and buildings, and vehicles that are, again, over $5,000, that we look at a six-year window for planning purposes and to help the city council with their annual budget. So that's a general overview. You'll see that each, there's a little bit of an introduction, which hopefully our new commissioners found helpful in understanding the purpose of this document, and then you'll see the different program areas are broken into administrative areas, DPS, the Public Department of Public Services, water, sewer, police, and public safety, and the Downtown Development Authority. And so you'll see the specific projects related to those program areas. And then there is a spreadsheet that shows everything all in one picture, but we're going to be getting that for you shortly, so we got a little glitch in that as well. So I apologize for partial information that you have this evening, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, and gather any additional information that you would like us to bring before we have the public hearing next month.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I guess, reach out to the commissioners here to see if there are any particular items which, at this point, caught your attention, or were raised any questions regarding the capital improvements plan as it currently stands.
Question, in the draft? Couple of questions. It's a draft, first of all.
It is.
I'm assuming there's a contract with somebody called Lathir Services LLC?
Yes.
Okay. Because I kept saying contact, and I wasn't sure who the contact was. So it's a, there's a program, and we have a contract with Lathir Services LLC.
Right.
It's just, it's a typo, not a...
We will, yeah, we'll make sure we get that.
Yeah, and Lathir Services is essentially our DPW.
Okay.
Yeah. We just, we just outsourced it.
Second question is, in the, in the overall budget, because I know CapEx is usually five grand or more, is there a reason that we still don't break out by, on a per-unit basis in the budget? So for example, if we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy two laptops?
Mm-hmm.
We just say two laptops, but we don't say estimated cost, six, 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 six. We just put the total number just sort of fit over the five grand? That's, that's...
I think that it depends on which department those were for. If that, was that the one for the police department?
No, this is admin, because, you know, the questions really start with, you know, the CapEx it has in here, servers and computers, which a lot of that is now virtual.
Right.
Okay. So, the question is, the cost that's in here, is that for actual hard server, or is it a cloud server? It doesn't say, it just says server.
Right.
So, does, does the final have more detail than, or will it just still say server?
I think those items are more general in nature, because I don't think those were not for this year, were they? If you recall, this one?
No, that's...
Right, so that's project for 2020, so that's something that probably next year you would see more information on it. So this is a general estimate of what is the anticipated cost of that, but we can get some more information, too, regarding that, if we can, if we have it available, if staff has it available for the public hearing, if that's helpful.
Okay. Under the Department of Public Services, I'm sure, we all know this is scheduled for, it says 1920, I'm sure under the new parking lots, it's not the network switches.
That's just...
I wasn't sure how the network switches in the parking lot get together.
Hey, we want bandwidth in our parking lot.
To make sure.
Smart parking.
Smart parking, exactly.
Yes, we're making sure you're reading it.
And the other question was, why, you said your bit of has more detail in the final?
Yes.
Was when in the sanitary sewer section, because I understand the whole sewer issue is a long, long term. Is there any talk or any conversation that takes place in the making of this budget when we're doing maintenance to look at the putting sleeves as opposed to grouting and replacing?
Yes, that is...
I just didn't read it, so I wasn't sure.
Okay, we can get you some more detail.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that, though. Most of the sewer that needs to be cured and placed, it's done. What's left is, my understanding is, is grouting, so every three feet, there's a joint, and we're still having inflow and infiltration issues, where water gets into the sewer pipes. And so, our city engineer has recommended, over the next two years, that we do a, continue to do a grouting program to, for those, for those pieces of pipe that didn't require cure and placing, that they were still in good enough shape, that we just seal the joints, and they have a robotic unit that goes into the, into the tube, and then...
Okay.
It fixes it from the inside.
Oh, fixes it from the inside, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't have to do, we don't do any excavation or anything like that. Yeah, so that's what that $180,000 is.
That's a really good question, and we can get more detail on that for you.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I know in other, well, in gas and oil, they use, because you don't want anything to leak, we use these sleeves.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a membrane that you can use that's water, that prevents anything from leaking through, chemicals and oil, everything, so.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what our cure and place program was.
Okay.
Could I, Jill, can I get just sort of a structure of how we read this? So, there were projects in each of these domain in 2018, they were either completed or not completed, but perhaps there weren't any schedule for 2018 for a particular area? Is that so? Okay, so, if they were not, if they were approved for 2018 activities and the expenditures, or they were not completed, so are they then moved up to the next year? So the activity and the allocation of the dollars are then moved?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless, unless there was an item, and I don't know of one that specifically jumps out at me as an example, but one that was evaluated and said, well, we're gonna move this forward, but instead of doing it next year, we're gonna do it in three years. That could have been, too, but I don't, I think everything was just bumped up a year if it wasn't completed.
I think there was a general reference to items being shifted, but I don't, I can't speak to the specifics on, on what they were, and I'm not sure the report spoke to them at this point.
That's separate, yeah.
We had, you know, an unanticipated significant expenditure with respect to Evergreen Road that bumped a lot of the local street back for at least two years, because this year we had anticipated and had grant money for the 11-mile project, so some of those local roads council did take out a few extra last year, but some of those that were anticipated and planned on being done, you know, last year and this year, I think have fallen further down on that list.
Are there any new items that represent a significant outlay? Are there major changes?
I think in terms of, I think there was anything significant, no.
See, I don't recall reading anything that was flagged as a significant...
The most significant changes that we saw were related to the administrative department, those four, five, six, and seven, those were the majority of what was added. A lot of the water main and water and road projects, some of them were shifted just to align with each other, so that water was done first, and then roads went after that. So just some adjusting, like, kind of like that on the fly, but nothing, the major expenditures that were added were the administrative, sort of, city hall.
And public safety, and a couple things, yes.
Given that some of these items are being pushed to the next year, or whatever year, is it still realistic to have the plan as is? In other words, is it feasible to complete these activities in the next year or subsequent years? In other words, is there a need to change the timeline?
Well, I think that'll be a question for council as it works through its operating budget for next year.
I'm gonna comment just on that a little bit, because one of the things that I've noticed, and I'll enter the neighborhood via Santa Barbara, and Santa Barbara is one of the, one of the roads that has the water main issues that are part of the plan, and they've been recognized as an important thing, important location for upgrading because of their condition. The road is also deteriorating, and because it's one of the through roads, it gets a lot of traffic, or gets more traffic, and it's in rough shape, too. So, I'm a little bit wondering how the sequencing of that will work out, and whether the roads will not need some intermediate attention before they're able to fit the water, the water main replacement in, and I believe that was scheduled not until, like, 2020, if I...
The water main?
Yeah.
No, it goes to the summer.
Was it the summer?
Phase one starts, I think, are we doing phase one and two this summer, I think?
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, that, that eases my concern on that then, a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead. I was just gonna say, the one, Suzie gave us the list here of things that were done, and I had noticed a bunch of these things were done, but the, under Department of Public Services, the dump truck, what, didn't we already do that?
Yes, it's on order, it has not arrived yet.
So, does that mean it's moved into the next fiscal year, or?
Technically, because we haven't paid anything, so although the money was allocated, yes, it may just have to roll over to next year.
Okay.
So those are some of the ones where if we, if it was on there from last year, we didn't hear back, we just left it so that we, just to make sure we didn't forget about.
Yeah, no, I was just...
If it wasn't ordered, we could keep it on.
Okay, so is that one that had, had staggered? I, I just remembering seeing that, and was trying to recall whether it was just something that we were replacing that frequently, or if it had actually, it had actually just slid to a future budget?
Yes, it's, it takes about a year, so the body is expected to be available next month, and then they have to work on the inner, that'll probably take another four months or so.
Okay.
And our fiscal year starts July 1st. So we're both...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Sure.
On the paving program, and since we just got the spreadsheet, under the paving program in 1819, it shows those funds of $150,000 are actually in the fiscal year 2021?
Do I have those just need to be moved?
Those are items, that's W, no, that's the water main.
R, 0, 0, 1.
R, 0, 0, 1, 2, and 3.
Sorry. What was the question?
Yes, it should be...
I'm assuming that the 2019 paving program is for this current fiscal year?
2019 to 2020.
It just says 2019 paving program.
So, that'll start after July.
That's actually scheduled for the calendar year, or fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
21, 22.
Does it say in the spreadsheet?
No.
On the spreadsheet.
Okay, we may have to, we'll have to double check that. If it says something different in the, in the book.
Down a year, yeah.
Now, I know Scott had mentioned previously, and I guess I didn't totally understand, this year, this fiscal year 1920, we are not doing a paving program.
This, the, Bruce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, this year, the 19, so 1920 budget, which will start this construction season and fall under the 1920 budget, is the 11-mile road, the service drive from City Southfield border to, I believe, Southfield Road, if it's going to extend west of that. But that, and that's what's represented on this, under the 2019 paving program, of approximately $400,000. That's tied to, to federal grants, and also an application for a local county grant for a portion of that, so that, that is, that is what's scheduled for this year.
I think we also, and maybe, I thought I read this yesterday somewhere, that also includes Roseland from, or did we already do Roseland? From Southfield to the city border?
Yeah, yes.
That was done last year, right?
Yes.
Oh, that's done last year?
Are we doing that this year?
That was this budget year, so the 18, 19, this one year.
Right, so we're doing it this summer, or it was done? I think I'm confused, I'm getting confused, because we did, I know we had some Roseland approach issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that was street, though.
Right.
I thought it was sidewalks.
No, that was what I wrote, I thought that was done this year.
Yeah.
This budget, this current budget.
Has been completed from, yeah.
Because that was, last year, council did, although they hadn't anticipated doing any roads last year, they, they did agree to allocate more funds when the budget was passed, to, to attend to some of the local roads, and that, I believe, was the road. There's also, I can't see that far, the Rackham Triangle.
Rackham Triangle.
Is that?
Sunny Brook, Rock, and...
I'm looking at it right there on the map, but Sunny Brook and Rock, is what, that was also added to the road.
Okay, so then the only project this year is indeed then the, the stretch of 11-mile road between, I believe it's Lexington, Lexington and Southfield Road.
And that, again, that's a more costly portion of roadway to do, so that's why I think it's put it into his that issue.
One question I have related to that is with the construction going on, or continuing on the site there, the apartments, it looks like the first two buildings are getting a lot closer to completion, and they indicated when they came in that that was going to continue, as, anything, are there any concerns? From my standpoint, construction traffic continuing through there while they're doing construction, is, is the sequencing of that right? And I, and I know we might not have total control on when the funds are available, especially the funds that are out of our, our control, so that that project needs to happen. I just would want to make sure that there aren't any issues related to damages being done, depending on, you know, the sequencing of the road project with the construction on that site.
I would say, just anecdotally, anecdotal, you know what I'm trying to say, that it wouldn't be an issue, because I think all the heavy lifting is done over there, I mean, it's just mostly just pickup trucks, and, you know, workers going in and out, so I wouldn't anticipate that it wouldn't be much of a problem.
Okay.
My understanding is, partly with the engineers, brings that the street project would not begin until fall, so most of the heavy trucks, traffic would already be over.
Okay.
So I guess I'll get back to the paving. Are we going to, in the spreadsheet, and are we gonna put dollars in for this current, or the upcoming budget year?
They're there, I think there's just a...
It's just obviously be shifted down.
Yeah, the spreadsheet, they moved some of the, the columns too far to the right, so it's a typo in the spreadsheet.
Okay, so you're correct there.
It's just shifted one year to the right, yep, it is, so the narrative is correct in the description of the road projects.
Okay, which, which column were we referring to there? Which column were you...
So, in particular...
In the roads section?
Yes, I see the roads.
The FY1920 line item?
Column, where it's empty.
Those, that column, FY1920, is empty.
Oh, okay.
So the numbers that are actually in 2021 are for the 2018 paving program.
Okay, now I, now I get the point.
And how is that, 219 paving program, the 300, the estimated 394,000, how is that reflected on here, if I'm not seeing it?
In the spreadsheet, or in the...
Yeah, the spreadsheet seems to have no placeholders for $150,000.
Yeah, I see.
But I think the, the graph is actually right at the end.
Yeah, and we'll have all that correct.
So, in the calendar year 201920, we are not doing any local streets?
Well, that's, that's not the...
We're not programmed to, I, just, you know, I always had a pet peeve on Evergreen Road going in front of Southfield, the city hall building over here, one of the worst roads for years and years and years. We have a road out here on California, it's one of the worst roads in the city, and it surrounds our building. We have Constance Park, we have Children's Activities, we have multitude of things, and it is, if not the crappiest, close to the crappiest road in the city.
Yeah, let me, let me talk about that for a second, because I was actually gonna say something while we, when we start talking about the roads. So one of the things that, that we're doing is, we're starting an infrastructure committee, which our first, we've done a lot of groundwork up to now, but our first meeting is coming up this Thursday, and one of the things that we're gonna be looking at is, you know, what do we do about the roads, and how do we pay for it? We're also looking at, the sewer is pretty much up to snuff where we want it, with the exception of the grouting that we talked a little bit earlier about, but our water mains, you know, I think it's 55% of our water mains were put in before 1955-ish, somewhere in there, they only have a 50-year life, which is why we're getting water main breaks all the time, so we're, we're looking at, you know, how we can speed up the process of replacing those, and then, incidentally, we're also, we're also gonna be looking at storm drains and sidewalks, a lot of things to look at, but hopefully, the numbers that we see here for, especially with respect to the roads, will be dramatically different when we go through this process next year.
Right.
But there's a lot of work to be done together, but we are starting a process, and we're taking a very serious look at it, and hoping to do some big things.
And we'd like to, just following up on that, we'd like to roll this process right into that one, and begin this much earlier in the budgetary planning process, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, yeah, rolling right into that, one of the items that caught my attention was reference to the, to the stormwater, and, and the system that had been favored, and that we were going through the process of getting those pipes grouted or repaired to keep water infiltration from those lines from occurring, referenced the attention being placed on the drainage, or the, the stormwater still entering the system from foundation drains.
Right.
Although they're not directly connected, and the, and the city has requirement for downspouts to extend five feet from the, from the structure walls, it alludes to that, but, or I say, the CIP alludes to that and makes this statement, but it doesn't step further into what the next approach will be, or what we're going to be required to do, and so...
Right.
I was anticipating we would be hearing more on that as well, or that, after reading that, and what does that mean for us now?
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer for that, but, you know, because a lot of that will require, you know, residents to dig up their houses, you know, the sides of their houses, do some very, very expensive changes to their, to their system, but, yeah, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet, but definitely aware that that's part of the issue of the inflow and infiltration.
I was gonna say, a lot.
It's about 30, I think it's about, if I remember correctly, it's about 30 or 35% of the homes, and I think it's mostly on the south side?
I don't remember.
Yeah. I've got no time, I don't remember.
I suspect there's more detail than we can get into there, but I, I know, I'll only say that foundation drains are there to keep water out of people's basements as well.
Right.
So, that's, you know, not something that we're, we can delve into here, that we tend to delve into here, but that's...
Yeah, but it's definitely, definitely on our, on our list of things to talk about and try to figure out, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I just got a couple typos, I believe they're typos, and I talked to Matt earlier about numbering the pages, but I guess he tried to, it just didn't come through.
There was another version that was at the spreadsheet.
It's titled Storm Sewer, and the fourth line from the bottom, I think it should be through, or though. And then the page that has sanitary sewer, you have I and I corrected stuff for the first time you use it, and you have it as 1 and 1.
Yeah, so that's a little too...
And if I can't continue, I...
You want to just give those to us, here, those little edits? Mr. Chair, after, we don't have to necessarily go through them all right now, if that's...
Oh, that's fine. I know there's mention here of cable TV equipment, but when... Oh, that's fine. I know there's mention here of cable TV equipment, but when it comes to the actual area, it just kind of remains mute, there's nothing. I know the city has, and this is where it'd be nice to have some sort of subcommittee meeting, where you could actually refer to it. We have no video camera here.
Right, I think that's what it is, and the cameras is what we're looking to get. So we brought Jim in-house.
Yes.
And there's no mention of it here, and on the CIP, it's got to be an expensive item.
Yes, the initial folks were in the area of $52,000 for the cameras, but it's still needed equipment.
I can't imagine that not being in this document. And I imagine it's a fairly urgent need.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
The other one that I saw that I think we've already done under Department of Public Services with the salt enclosure, I believe that was done this year as well. Am I correct? Because I know we-
I'm sorry, which one?
I know we approved it.
The salt enclosure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, this is, that's the listing that was actually in the budget that was approved by council.
Yeah.
It's like a three-column spreadsheet of the items that, for the capital improvements that council actually approved. And of that list, everything is completed, or in the process of being completed, except for the City Hall updating.
Yeah, the salt product wasn't on there.
Okay. Let me just finish budget, item within the department and not a capital improvement.
I'm going to pose a question to the commission here. I know there's been, we kind of, I'll say picking at, that's not intended to be negative, but looking at items that are within this, and there's been a variety of things that appear to be elements that need some coordination, some correction, or some cleanup in the document. And I'm personally not getting a comfort level of whether we're ready to get this before, for a public hearing yet. I think in the past, we've had some sessions where there's a rollout from the Capital Improvements Plan Subcommittee to kind of step through it before we get to that. And while this may be intended to service for that purpose, I think, I think we've all been challenged here to be up to speed, not having necessarily all the information to fully digest it. I just wanted to see if anybody else had some other feeling.
This is just the draft, right?
This is a draft, and we're going to incorporate all the changes that you had for us, and address all of the questions that you asked us as well, in this document, which you would receive again, and ideally hold the public hearing. And there's a little bit of a time sensitivity due to city council preparing its budget. So we do want to move it along, we don't want to push you beyond your comfort with it, but we do need to move it along in the process, so.
How long do you think it'll be before you get the next draft, or the next reiteration of this?
Well, it depends on the information we get back from staff, but hopefully-
Roughly.
Two weeks?
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is-
Which will give you two weeks before the next meeting.
Okay, so the next meeting then, intended to the next regularly scheduled monthly meeting, which would be the May?
Yes.
The May meeting?
Yes.
So we should have it in time for the combined meeting at the end of this month?
Well, so we have-
Is that one of the areas?
We have a slight, we do have a slight timing issue, because the council is having their public hearing on the budget on May 20th, and your meeting is on the 21st. So, you know, we had discussed, Jill and I had discussed possibly having your public hearing for-
That's right.
The CIP at the special meeting on the 30th, as a way to, you know, at least do our best to coordinate with the timing of council's public hearing for the overall budget. I realize that that does not give you, that does not give anybody a lot of time.
I guess what I was looking for is just assessing how much time we would have in advance of receiving it next time, so that we're-
Like next time, like next year, you know, we're going to start this way earlier, but-
And we can, it doesn't, like, council's already got its initial draft, and they can look at the draft, this draft, to determine if there's any changes that need to be made for the next upcoming fiscal year budget. But we can certainly continue to work on the CIP. It doesn't have to be done, done, before council's budget is completed. And if there is something that comes up with the CIP process, there is a possibility that the council can make an amendment, if need be, to reconcile that difference. So it, maybe we just shouldn't rush, if you're not, you're feeling like it's not ready.
This isn't the first time we've had a timing issue.
Right.
Getting the CIP done prior to the approval of the budget.
Well, I was reaching out, because I was sensing that there wasn't necessarily a total comfort level, that we fully understood the information that's been presented thus far, and if there's changes that are going to come, are we going to get a chance to see them, or are those in advance, in advance, to be prepared the next time, as well as, I guess, maybe is there time to receive any comments post this meeting that could also be integrated?
Personally, I'm less worried, I'm only really worried about that issue with stuff that's happening in this coming fiscal year, right? Because things that are coming in the fiscal years beyond that, adjustments can be made, right? It's the things that are going to end up becoming part of the budget that council's going to approve at their next, they're going to talk about their next meeting. Those are the items that really need to be buttoned down. Everything else can be, in my opinion, a bit vaguer, and continue to be worked on over the coming month or so, so that we get a better version of the capital improvement plan on those items. But anything that's going into 1920 fiscal year needs to be locked down pretty well. That's my opinion.
And I'll ask you guys one more question from that, and that's with Scott, whether or not, if there are any items in review of this post this meeting that we see, would it be inappropriate for those to be passed along as part of contribution to that effort, or should anything that gets contributed to that be occurring in this meeting right now?
So I think if commissioners have, like you said, if you have something that occurs to you after this meeting, but prior to council's meeting, would direct the commissioners to express those concerns to you, and then you, as the chair, can convey those to Cheryl or to Suzie, and then those can get brought to council and be made part of, because to Jason's point, the critical components are those that are going to get budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year. And so a lot of that was carried forward from last year's CIP, stuff that had been anticipated for this year, or stuff that didn't make it into the, you know, 18, 19 budget that was slated to be carried over for this year. So council is going to be having a series of budget study sessions prior to the next month's regular meeting, so that information is stuff that's going to be discussed and hashed out at those budget study sessions. So if there is something that the planning commissioners feel, that is, an urgent item, something that definitely needs to be brought up and discussed, that would be the appropriate mechanism for getting that included. And again, to Jill's point, you know, just looking last year, we had our capital improvement public hearing on June 18th. So it was after the budget was always, already had been adopted. There is always, again, if it's something that needs to come into the 1920 budget, there is a process that the council can do a budget amendment to incorporate that. And typically, there are budget amendments hearings that are held at the end of the fiscal year, just to clean up issues that were over expenditures or under expenditures in the current fiscal year budget, so that can be included at that time.
Okay. Well, I think with that clarification, then if there are any concerns by the commission, that they would be, you know, expressed to me, and that the focus be on the current year's budget items. And I think that simplifies the load of understanding, you know, the content of all the information that we received, so.
But isn't there still concern about the level of accuracy for the 1920 budget, in order for us to review it, or is it simply that the 1920, for us to comment on it, is not crucial in terms of advisory to the council? Is that what you're saying?
And, well, and I think it's our understanding too, that staff has been working together on their budget requests for 1920, 192020 concurrently with providing us the information for the CIP. Is that correct?
Yes.
So there shouldn't really be, we shouldn't be out of alignment, at the end of the day, between the CIP and the operating budget.
Okay.
Comfortable with that.
I don't know that I have any more questions on that, and I don't think there's anything that we particularly have to act on this, this evening.
No.
So if we're done discussing it, if there's no other issues we want to move forward at this time, then we'll close this item, and move on to the next item on our agenda. Share my agenda. So we will move on to new business, some tabled items, sample ordinance language for the drive-throughs, drive-through uses in the Village Center.
So in your packets, you had a little bit of a summary memo that kind of wrapped up our previous conversations that we had back in February and March about the issue at hand, which was really focused on the pros and cons of drive-through uses in the Village Center. And that was based on a conceptual drive-through use in the Village Center area. And we, at your request, put together two zoning alternatives for you. One is to consider amending the ordinance to allow drive-throughs as a special land use, and the second one would be to add a section providing for plan unit development, review and approval, because we don't currently have that. And I, we went through a pretty good description of what that was last month, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have on any of this. But essentially, option number one, drive-through as a special land use, would allow the planning commission and council to make a determination of whether a proposed drive-through would be appropriate in a given location. And we included several standards, 11 standards, in here that address trying to mitigate some of the impacts of a very automotive, by its nature, an automotive use into what we are trying to create as a very pedestrian-oriented district. And so those standards would apply then. And then, the second option is the planned unit development. This is a much broader set of ordinance standards that could be used for a number of different approaches to development and redevelopment in the city. I think there could even be a sort of a hybrid, if you will, that if you went the route of the PUD, that we could also add those standards for special, or for drive-through uses, and they would also apply with the PUD. I think that there was a little bit of concern about being too specific, or being too broad, and not providing enough guidance under the planning of development to, again, to remember what all those standards might be. So if we have them in the ordinance, we can always refer back to that. So that's sort of a general overview, but again, happy to answer any questions that you have. Any, oh, I guess I should also wrap up too, by saying that this was language that you all were going to have some conversation about, and then we were going to discuss it again with our joint meeting with council at the end of the month.
Okay.
With your recommendations.
So we have the options in front of us, and hopefully, we've all had a chance to read through these portions of them, and maybe we have questions to offer up to our, to these planners.
I have a question. I'm pretty clear on the special land use, it's pretty clear and straightforward, and I find the way it's written. For the PUD, item, one D talks about the intention, it is further intended that the planned unit development may use to permit non-residential uses of residentially zoned areas, or to permit residential use of non-residentially zoned areas. Can, I can think of residential use of a non-residentially zoned area, but can you provide examples?
Of a, of a non-residential use in a residentially zoned area?
Yeah. Are people setting up businesses in their houses?
No, no, I don't know. And I think that is, again, more of a broad statement, but it also ends that, that statement ends with provided the goals of the master plan are met, and the resulting development is consistent with the master plan, and would permit, promote the public health, safety and welfare. So I don't know, there is a specific case where that might happen, but it's not something that needs to be in there. If you're concerned that that might lead to something that's not desirable, you don't need to have it in, but it's-
I guess, when they remodeled or rebuilt the credit union, took the houses down, that was a residential area that they redid for non-residential use.
Yeah, that ended up being rezoned before they started.
But it was originally residential.
Yes.
That got changed for residential.
So you're saying a PUD could be used in that?
It depends on where your development is going to be located. If you need to get one house or one something out of the way, and it's part of the development and everybody agrees, it's part of the agreement.
Got it. That's a great example.
And just to clarify, that contract would be a further negotiation process between the city and-
The developer.
And the developer, as to what they might allow.
Yeah. Yeah, that part I like about the PUD, that's really, really important part of this, is the contract piece of it.
Yes.
Jill, I have a question. I'm trying to figure out, I'm more partial to a PUD, and I can understand the necessity to move some of the requirements into a PUD. I just cannot understand what one is for. Drive-through only be used, no, for the very first one under the variance.
I'm sorry.
Drive-through may use is only to be accessory, to be permitted retail, restaurant, drive-through, establish serving food and beverages that are primarily prepared on-site without the use of deep-fried equipment.
Yes.
So what happens if I want to get Krispy Kreme? No Krispy Kreme, no Dunkin' Donut, no Tim Hortons?
The whole idea of that was to prevent, you know, McDonald's or-
But you don't have no space for McDonald's, so it's, that's really not an issue. But for the donut, the donut place right there, 12, if they decided to relocate because we're smaller and more quaint, they can't.
They can, as long as they don't have a drive-through.
But if they wanted a drive-through, they can't.
Right.
So are we defeating the purpose? If it's a PUD, you negotiate that, right?
Well, don't forget too, I mean, you could have a situation where, you know, a fast food organization buys one of these buildings, raises it, and wants to set up a fast food, you know, a McDonald's, or Burger King, or what have you. So it's not just, you know-
Well, I guess the question is, if you're going to, if you're going to build a Chick-fil-A, and you know it's a drive-through.
Right.
You're going to have to have enough space. And we already know that the Village Center doesn't have enough space. So it's only going to be a development that's going to fit the amount of space that we have. It's going to have to fit-
Unless they buy a building and raise-
Well, you'd have to buy some residential, or something else.
Or two buildings in combined property.
Right.
Yeah. But then it's still part of a development that's negotiated.
It is. I think that's a good question that is worth continuing to discuss, in terms of whether you, as, whether you're A, willing to allow the drive-through, and B, allow it for any type of restaurant, or if you really want to narrow it into a specific type. That's a policy decision on your part.
I think the initial inclusion of that language came out of discussions and concerns with, well, do we really want to allow drive-throughs in the Village Center district? And just kind of as a straw man placeholder for addressing that issue, or for at least-
Right, it's a way, this ordinance amendment would accommodate a drive-through, but not necessarily encourage it, is I think, sort of the feeling that we were getting from our discussions.
I guess I'm more trying to encourage development. So I guess the question-
Well, but then that's a great question to raise then, and that's something for you all, and that's why we're going to talk about it.
My concern is what happens to the bank? Okay, it's the perfect locate, if this was two years ago, it would be perfect for Tim Hortons, it wouldn't be sitting in Southfield. But this wouldn't allow for it. Even though it's a great, it's a great location, it's a great establishment, everybody would get coffee, but because of one line in here, we'd say no. So my question is, is are we looking about today, or about tomorrow?
And I would answer your question with a question, which is, are we trying to create a walkable Village Center District here in this location? Or are we more concerned about encouraging any kind of redevelopment? And I'm not ju, I'm not making a judgment, a value judgment on it. I'm just thinking that that's the question that we're talking about.
Right. And that's the challenge for the planning commission to, to decide, decide with, with the community's input as well, in my view. I think that this is very, kind of focused, been on a particular business, namely Panera Bread, and the popularity of that and feedback we've received regarding the popularity of keeping that, that business in our community. At the same time, we're trying to, I guess, avoid a more car-centric business development to, which runs against the, the master plan for the city. Or it requires a, you know, a, a relooking at that and changing what our focus will be, what we, you know, hope to, to achieve, which is, is it, is it development of a broader sense, or is it working towards a more walkable community with a different, it's a building structure, creating, you know, the space, you know, the, the place-making for the community?
And I think that the argument can be made that, that that use, the Panera, is more of a community establishment than another use that would be more really just serving the cars that are coming through.
I'm gonna ask you this question then.
Okay.
Assume that wasn't Panera sitting there.
Right.
And say, if Panera said, we want to come into Letherton Village where the bank is, but we want a drive-through. Will we say the same thing because it's an existing drive-through and the space is there? Or will we say, well, because they're not part of the community already, we say, well, we really want them in the community, we really want Panera if it's a good fit, but they want a drive-through. So why, why put Panera up there? It could be any established facility or company or restaurant or whatever you want to call it that wants to be here. I think what we're doing is we're making it so restrictive, we need to make sure whatever wording we pick, it gives us the flexibility to negotiate what we want. So we can say, yeah, you can come, but unfortunately, your development will not fit a drive-through. Or we say, yep, you can come, and your development fits a drive-through. But the minute we put it in here, the first time they read it, it says, yeah, you can come, but you can't have a drive-through. Well, part of my business model is a drive-through. We've already eliminated some people who might want to come that would fit. That's the question. And, and I guess I keep saying the same thing over and over again, because I'm still, I remember the woman that was standing here, the last meeting I was at, that said, we can keep talking about a walkable community, but we've got a 45 mile an hour drive right down the center here. So I don't care how much walking we're gonna do, you're gonna have cars no matter what we do. So there's gotta be a combination of how to achieve both. You want cars to stop, and you want people from the neighborhood to walk. So you gotta give both something. So how do you do that if you make all your wording restrictive? That's, that's really my question.
And I understand that point, and I would also suggest too that this isn't changing the fact that we already allow drive-throughs as a special land use everywhere else in the Southfield Road Corridor. It's just in the Village Center where we're trying to create the walkability that we haven't allowed them before. But they already are allowed, and I think we should consider some of these standards. You know, we have some, but I think we could, we could beef them up a little bit. And maybe, you know, that's one that we don't put in the rest of the corridor. But in the cor, in the Village Center, maybe we leave it in.
Mr. Chair, I have a process question.
Okay.
So is the meeting, the joint meeting in, what, two weeks from now, is the primary topic to discuss this, this drive-through, these two ordinance proposals or amendments, correct?
And I think, and I think bigger picture is, what is our, are we still on board with the Village Center vision of a walkable mixed-use area? And is this consistent with that?
Right. And I'm wondering why we are re-initiating this topic as a discussion here when we're going to open it up and expand it to additional stakeholders. It seems to me that we've, we've shared our thoughts about these. I mean, it's, but essentially, our partners have to, we want to listen to them, we're gonna talk about it again, and it just feels like we are oversaturated with, to me, with some of the same comments.
Well, ultimately, we make the recommendation to council.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, that's our...
And I think that their questions would be, would very much be the questions that you've already asked, and we've already started to explore with some of this language.
So I wondered if, if the purpose of what we're doing here now would be to perhaps plan on how this could be summarized and introduced to the other stakeholders so that we can move through an efficient process? Because I think it's been introduced to this commission a couple times already, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of the fact that you, you've drafted these potential ordinance amendments or ordinances. So I wondered if rather than, than going through the same conversation is to maybe reframe this and to say, how can we then prepare for our next conversation with our partner stakeholders? That's, that's my thought. I'm just feeling that we're conveying some of the same notions that we've talked about in the last two sessions.
And, and I would, would agree with that to an extent. I think part of the intent, at least what I was, my expectations coming into this session is we have information on the two options that we suggested, or that were discussed, and would be able to look between those and decide which may be more or less appropriate. And one of the things that comes to mind in, in looking at these is, I guess, deciding the goal of if, if we are, thus far, we've been on, on board with the idea of looking for a way to maintain or to accommodate a particular tenant in, in one of the buildings in the Village Center District. And so towards that goal, what, which option best serves that, that, and that process, what fits with the schedule of, of, you know, because we, we had asked about the scheduling of how their lease negotiations would play out so that we'd understand when a decision would have to be made on this. And so I, my hope was that we could come to some sort of a, maybe a conclusion of if there's one, one, one option versus the other that the commission would recommend. And one of the questions that came to my mind regarding this was, does the, the PUD process and, and the necessity of them, you know, coming back to us with a plan that fits that, is that going to be problematic from a timing standpoint? Is it going to take longer to negotiate out and sort throughout a contract arrangement? And I didn't, I didn't come into this evening with those thoughts. Well, actually, I, I did from reading between the two, just wondering, because there's a lot more information and things to consider in a, in a PUD, and, and maybe that's more of, oh, we can decide that, you know, later. But ultimately, do we have time for later, at least for the initial, initial goal?
We can't lose sight of the more strategic implications of this, right? Because whatever ordinance may be chosen to facilitate what Panera Bread is asking for could potentially be utilized and probably will be utilized with other developments in the future, right? So we can't lose sight of that. I can tell you that, from my perspective, one of the main reasons I wanted to be on planning commission from Jump Street was because I had heard rumblings, rumblings from various people in the community and potential business owners that the city's too hard to work with, right? So that's something else that's in the, kind of the back of my head that piggybacks exactly on what you said, Mark. If we're saying, here's a PUD, and you have to negotiate a contract, and that's a very long process, does that make it more difficult to do development in the city? At the same time, that provides you a lot of flexibility that a defined ordinance specific to drive-throughs doesn't provide you. So you're kind of, that, the, the flexibility makes it easier to potentially do development in the city while also causing a longer timeframe for that to happen, which might make it harder to do development in the city, right?
Right.
So it's like, it's, it's not, I wouldn't say it's six of one and half a dozen of the other, they're just considerations that we need, I think we should be thinking about in terms of these two options here. Which ones do we think best serve both the needs of the developers and the needs of residents in terms of, you know, making our community available for development that serves the community? That we don't lose opportunities that can be really beneficial to the community just because there's too much flexibility and it takes too long, right?
I'm just gonna add, if I, you know, as devil's advocate though, negotiations don't have to necessarily be some big drawn-out process, you know? I mean, it's, I just don't want that to be like the, like the predominant thought. Like, it doesn't have to be, the, the negotiation of a PUD could move just as quickly as using a special land use, you know? So you still have that flexibility, but I just, you know, I wouldn't want to let yourselves be hampered necessarily by the possible term of it.
And, and I would add in agreement with that, that Panera corporately is, this is not anything new to them.
They do this all the time.
They haven't seen before, yes. And I actually worked in a community where they were there under a PUD, they had to amend the PUD to add a drive-through, which in their original PUD approval had been expressly, expressly prohibited. And they went in, they knew that that was the case, they went in, they asked for an amendment, it was granted, and they were successful. So that's not something that they're unfamiliar with.
Okay.
You didn't say an amendment, that was, that was something granted under, like, a PUD?
Yes. So the PUD had been approved originally in maybe, I'm trying to remember now, in the community, maybe 2007 or '08? And then it was in, I think, 2016 or '15 that they asked for an amendment. And actually, that particular development had been amended several times.
Mr. Chair, I, I reiterate, I would seek your guidance on what you would like us to do for the purpose of this meeting. I thought the purpose of the meeting with the joint was to, to seek a greater, broader set of stakeholders to, so that we can deliberate on whether we go with, you know, this type of ordinance or the other type. And so, but I'm hearing that you think we should decide on the ordinance prior, or at least have some sense prior to this joint meeting?
I think it would be helpful if you go into the joint meeting saying, we've been talking about this, we've had three meetings about it, this is where we feel like we're heading. Do, would council support that or agree with that? And here, and here's our reasons why. And, and very much with this format, I mean, they will have this memo that we'll update with tonight's conversation, so that they will also have the benefit of the introduction, all of the other supporting information about the master plan. But I, I think that to go in without an idea of where you're headed, I think council won't really, I mean, you could speak to this...
I was just gonna say, my first question would be, you know, the joint meeting, what do you guys recommend?
And why do you recommend it?
Right. I mean, I think we should...
Can we redirect our conversation to, so that we come out with that outcome before the end of the evening? Maybe do that?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Certainly, we can do that. And, and I didn't think we were necessarily that far off track with that effort, but...
Mr. Chair, question. What has to be done to say, I recommend we use a PUD?
I think we have to, as a, as a group, have a comfort level that's gonna best, that's gonna best serve the needs of this community.
I guess the only way you're gonna know is when people actually say what they're thinking, what they're leaning towards, so...
So you think maybe we should take a straw poll?
It would be, it would be helpful to understand if we're all in the same, if we're in the same boat or not in the same boat.
Certainly. And that's, I was seeing this as, this, as part of the process, so, so I wasn't sure we were necessarily there to straw poll, but it's, but I'm, but I'm getting the inclination or the, the understanding that we are, so...
And I guess I would just offer too, if you are undecided, so if it comes to you and you say, I'm not really sure, if you could add, maybe, I'd like to know this information, or this information would be helpful for me in making a determination. So if you don't know, that's okay, but let us know how we can help you.
Or if it's conditional, like you were saying, how you wanted to change a line.
Oh, yeah. And that's, we're not, this is not to make any kind of recommendation on the specific language, it's more about the general direction that the language might go. Because we'll have time to do that. And I guess, I, I should say, I haven't heard from anybody connected with that project since they were here.
I, yes, I have. I did talk to Sam last week, I guess it was, I think it was last Thursday. He has been seemingly in very frequent conversations with the Panera folks. They are well aware of what meetings have been had, what meetings are happening, and that there's, you know, joint meetings scheduled, and that we are, you know, we're, we're having discussions, and I consider it to be moving forward regardless of the decision, right? So they're aware of that, he's still feeling very confident that he's going to be able to get some, at least, you know, get extend, you know, a couple of 30-day extensions or more. I mean, they haven't committed to anything, but at the same time, I, you know, I believe that the fact that they haven't just said, hey, you know what, our lease is up at the end of the summer, you guys aren't making any decisions fast enough, we're out. I think the fact that they haven't said they're out means that they're willing to wait to see what we have to say. So, you know, he's still feeling good, and so I'm gonna ride with that.
I'm gonna say, I think we need to move as fast as we can without Russia.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want, no, I fully agree. I fully agree. I want, I want you guys to make a good, informed decision.
I don't want them to leave because we were too slow in making the decision.
No.
And we need to make the right decision and we're comfortable.
I don't think you guys are moving too slowly. I don't really think you're moving too quickly. I think you're moving at just the right pace for, for you as a board, and, you know, I think we're taking all the right steps. So I, I think that's, I, you know, maybe it's naive, but I think that's a good sign for, for anyone that wants to come and do a project or development in the city, so, you know, we're working towards it.
Well, then let's, let's go down the line and take a straw poll on where everybody's at with the two options that are...
PUD.
PUD.
I'm leaning toward the PUD.
Okay. Well, I was leaning toward the PUD, but I was a little bit concerned over whether this was gonna cause a deliberation problem in the process further down that might delay and create issues with, with, with timing.
PUD gives you a lot of flexibility.
But that side, but that aside, then I'm fine with the PUD.
PUD.
PUD. Also PUD. And the fact that it has this contractual component to it, and Susie has a good point that that could move on quickly, I guess the question I would have is, what if any requirement for a public hearing or a review by either the commission or the council is required with a contract like that?
The contract, no. You will have a public hearing on the PUD project itself.
Yeah.
And the proposal, but council will be doing the negotiation with the city attorney on the actual contract.
The actual contract. So that doesn't have to be...
But it'll be, it's tied, it's always tied to the development.
So you already know that information because it's in the site plan review?
Yeah, you know what it is. It's, yeah, it's intended to be consistent with what's been approved.
Okay.
That's great.
There you go.
Thank you.
So, I think, an agreement on where, where we want to head with this, so...
So how, how should we plan for the joint committee meeting now that we have a consensus on what we might present to them? So that we, because I, I, too, I'm, I hold to that idea of including as many stakeholders because I think it will lead great credibility and legitimacy when we do have a public hearing, is that it doesn't emanate just from this commission, and that we did indeed seek the input from our partners. So do you have any recommendation how, because if, if, if we were to approach the joint meeting in the way that we have done in the last two or three meetings, we may not be out of there. So I, I look to my colleagues and to you and to say, how do we do that? Is it a series of PowerPoints or, and in order, I'm concerned that it's, it's never gonna go anywhere unless we narrow the focus.
I agree with you, and I think, you know, I think this is helpful in laying out the whole project, and we intentionally keep it consistent by just telling you what we've updated, but we've elected, at the risk of wasting a lot of paper, to keep all of the material that we've given you in the same document so that anybody who picked up this month's document would know what you talked about last month and the month... month's document would know what you talked about last month and the month before. So I think this is a good handout to send to council ahead of time before our joint meeting. But if PowerPoint is useful, too, we can do a lot more illustrations with that, and that can really frame everything from a big perspective, and then drill down to, here's what the planning commission is recommending and why, and then have some feedback from council.
And it won't be the first time they're hearing about it, because I briefed them on it as well, just to give them an idea of what we've been talking about.
Do they get your packets? Yeah, so they...
We haven't been.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
The minutes are included as part of the updates.
Do they have...
You may not read the planning commission.
Do we have submission why right now from this group?
Have what?
Do we feel we have sufficient, answering the question, why we recommend, beyond the general, "It's the most flexible"?
That could be...
That was the major reason I gave them.
If that's it, and we don't need to go into more detail, and I'm a detailed person, I'll admit it.
I think we've engaged in a rational, comprehensive approach. I'm happy with the approach.
Yeah, I think it better serves the strategic mission of the city, right? As opposed to just one thing that does just drive-throughs and only drive-throughs in this one district, and it's way too narrow, right? I like the idea of something that provides flexibility, but also serves a more strategic and, you know, clearly, like, the master plan, the definition of the village center, and how the anticipated development was foreseen 10 years ago, it hasn't come to fruition. Having a PUD in place, maybe that would have helped some things happen that otherwise haven't happened, you know? Those are the types of things that are going through my head in terms of justification.
Was the thought that we're doing this for Village Center and mixed use, putting it in the ordinance, right?
For the PUD?
Yeah.
The PUD would apply, could apply anywhere, yeah. Well, no, wait, did we say, we may have limited it? MX and, yeah. Mixed use and Village Center.
Chair?
Yes.
And I guess I just, moving along, this joint meeting, I think Cheryl kinda alluded to it, is there anything else specific that the planning commission wants to bring forth that's relevant at this time, that would help us move forward in the future months ahead? I think specifically, we have a master plan that needs to be updated.
And that's what I would suggest be the point number two.
And I think maybe you even talked about it before. Is our downtown vision still the same today? And should it be the same today as it was 10, 15 years ago? Or should we consider, you know, going to Plan B? And if that's what council chooses, I think that's maybe the direction we should go. I think it's time now...
To have that discussion.
To have that discussion.
Yeah.
Unless it could become so burdensome that one meeting can't handle it, but maybe it's just go off and prosper and see what you guys can come up with. I don't know, it's due.
I think it certainly, it is due, and I expected it as part of what our effort might be this year. I mean, we've been dealing with the immediate, the immediate issues at hand.
Right.
And so we really haven't stepped into that at this point.
Oh, but that's my plan for you. That's my plan for you. So yes, we're gonna master plan.
Well, and I think, I think, too, I mean, with all the changeover we've had over the last years, it's been since, what, four years since Martha's been, you know, the last real planner we've had? And so, you know, I don't think anybody has been out there progressively marketing our master plan. I think it's pretty much been sitting on a shelf, waiting for somebody to come to us and say, "Hey, we wanna build your village center," which is never gonna happen. And I think we've got Susie here, and, you know, it's, you know, something that we can be out marketing, and maybe that'll make some of these happen.
No pressure.
No pressure whatsoever.
What pressure, people?
But, you know, but I think that's realistically a big part of why nothing has happened. We haven't done anything with it, so...
Absolutely agree.
So how do we put forth that in a meeting, as far as an agenda item or a topic, or who frames it, or...
I think that working with Cheryl and Susie will come up with a little agenda, and then we can develop all the supporting materials in terms of, you know, whether it's PowerPoint, little memo, I mean, this will be a memo, we can do a little PowerPoint. I have a couple ideas about master plan.
And I get a sense that Susie has some ideas about the master plan and...
Do you mean for the meeting two weeks from now?
That's what I was referring to.
You want to introduce the master plan and this at the same time?
No, not the whole master plan, really just the Village Center.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of what we're discussing anyway, so...
That's just ambitious.
One is the flexibility to address the immediate issue, and the other, and the other part is the, okay, now let's take a step back from the immediate issue and say, "How does what we're seeing, or what we've seen, or what's transpired, which has been very little in terms of actually being able to accomplish something in the, towards that specific goal, is it time to reevaluate? What do we wanna do to encourage development? Maybe still place make, but maybe it's in a different way than it's been imagined."
I think that's too broad for the meeting, for, in two weeks. That's too broad.
We'll be there for hours.
Give it, no, give it as a context, but for us to go in that, in that direction, it's not...
I'd rather see, like, bring up the concept that we need to review the master plan, and particularly the Village Center District, but maybe we, you know, go and think about it and come back at the next meeting in three months.
Oh, sure, whatever, just start making those steps forward.
Sure.
With the bodies at hand, because, yeah, we're obviously not gonna solve anything, but we've done walkability studies, we're DEQ, Michigan Developmente, we've got awards up to Wazoo, and yet we still have a Village Center that is relatively stagnant.
Well, and I would suggest that we're, at this point, we're not really prepared to step in and have a prepared recommendation...
Oh, no.
About where this is going to go, so it's more of a working session in that regard, which is...
Well, I think that's what it was scheduled to be, is a working session.
And that's what I understood it would be as well, so, as opposed to...
And it gives our new leader a chance to shine and show her what she's made of.
And put more pressure on her.
Well, and also, this is your five-year review for the city's master plan, that's required by state law that you review it, you're not required to do anything to it if you choose not to. But this is a good time to have this conversation about the level of review and potential update may need to occur in this next cycle, and whether it's a complete overhaul, or if we feel like it's just a stamp it, where it's good, we're gonna keep moving in that direction, or if there's something in between, that's an update. And I think that's some of what you wanna get from the council, as you think about what you wanna see in your master plan for the next five years.
Okay, so I think if there's homework, the homework would be to start thinking about...
Yeah, start thinking.
Yeah, start thinking about where we've been, where we are as a community and towards that master plan, and what our thoughts are as far as what we should do different, you know, what do we wanna consider? What things do we need to press? Is that, is there something we need to focus, to refocus ourselves, to make what we currently have work possibly, or to encourage it to be maybe more desirable, too, as an approach? You know, there's some hard decisions in that, and that's why I think it hasn't happened, that lack of money and resources that the city can contribute to do it. And the other part is buy-in to accept, you know, the level of change that may be necessary to make that happen. And so if we're not up for that, then maybe the issue is, let's look at it differently in terms of how we develop the Village Center. Maybe we work more tightly within the constraints that we have, or maybe we, you know, come up with something different, so...
Agreed.
Okay. So, to the one thing, just a question I have is, I mean, did we actually go through, I mean, I don't know, think that we need to go, have to walk through it, but does anybody have any questions on the PUD? And we took a straw poll, saying that we all like the PUD, but I don't think we opened it up for...
The only question I have is about the contract, which I got the answer on that.
Well, that was the back to my question to the why, the why. If there are any specifics related to it. I mean, the part that I'd say is, we say, "Well, we don't have, well, this doesn't have to be in there, and this doesn't have to be in there." I don't know that we've gone through point by point and said, "Yeah, this, that we have all the answers here either for what to tell you to put in, take out, or what the implications are." So if that, that's not critical at this point.
Cheryl, is this standard for a PUD?
It is, but with an eye towards what would be appropriate here, I would say, let me look through. So, you know, generally, I think it's, like, the purpose of it is important, to be able to identify what that is, the criteria for qualifications, telling you where it's permitted, making it clear that it's not to avoid complying with the zoning ordinance, but to get some flexibility. Some things that relate to the master plan and some of the other overarching goals of the city. Yeah, I think, you know, it's a, it's a general framework that seems to work in most communities, there's nothing really...
Yeah, I see here that it includes the principles of the current master plans.
Right. It spells out the process of how that all works.
Well, and it identifies that the current principles are one of the factors that will be, I think, weighed, in terms of what, how does this, if it doesn't match it, then what's proposed instead, that's a give and take in that process.
Right.
So I will just add, I was gonna, earlier, I was gonna jump in and say that the PUD approach is, and this is why it's important to include the discussion with respect to the master plan, is because those two are integrally intertwined. If you're going to, you're, you can't be entering into contracts for planning your developments that are completely off-base with where your master plan objectives are. And so, again, there, one of the discussions that needs to be had is, what will implementing this type of a development process, what impact will that have on our master plan, our ability to implement that master plan? So, yeah, it's definitely something we're going to approach this year, but this is going to be implemented soon, and you will very likely have something submitted under this prior to you revising or completing the revision process on the master plan. So having a firm grasp on what is the, you know, what is the master plan, and what is the intended future of that Village Center, because that is something that's gonna be applied right away, and again, likely prior to actually having that amendment completed, if that's the route that you end up going. So just keep that in mind, that this has a direct impact on that future vision, and again, it has to be consistent with, so...
And our ability to respond to it.
And your ability to respond to it, so, yeah.
Yes, great point.
I just wanted to offer a suggestion for the, for the presentation for the combined board meeting. Cheryl, if it would be possible to have a picture or flow chart to show what the process would be as a sample, I think that would be very helpful for the understanding.
Okay, no more discussion on this, we'll move on to number eight, automatic for discussion.
I'll wait for my staff update.
All right, we'll move on to general communication correspondence, legal, start with legal update.
We'll write the staff update.
Well, you know, process, process. So I wanted to let you guys know, Jagged Fork has pulled their building permits, so you should start seeing some work. They're still on track, they got, I think they pulled their permits two weeks ago. So they're still on track to open end of June, so that's exciting. They're really happy and pleased with how well we all work together, and so, it's lovely to you guys.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So I know that they wanted to get access to the building and the ability to start doing work on the building as soon as possible, so they have their permits, have they actually started to do anything in there, cleaning up, moving things out?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they were, I believe Jim was allowing them to do some light demo, you know, take out the old booths and whatnot, so, yeah, they're, they're in there working. I think they pulled, they pulled their permits the Tuesday of our staff meeting, so maybe that was last week, last week, so maybe, of course, they, but, so, yeah, they're, they're in there.
Great.
Boston move, so, they're really excited. So yummy breakfast for all in the future summer months. So also, speaking of our Village Center, Main Street Oakland County reached out to myself and Cheryl about a Partners in Preservation program that is being promoted through American Express and the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the National Main Street Center. And some of you may have been familiar with it, last year Pontiac was one of the finalists for a housing program. So they have encouraged us to submit a nomination, or submit a proposal for the Annie Lathrop School. The theme for this year is women and their impact on communities and planning. So we have a few checkboxes that we can tick off of that. Oakland County's actually already kind of floated the concept past the powers that be, and their interest has been piqued. So I'll be submitting a application by the 22nd, because, you know, nothing like a tight turnaround. And, but if we're chosen as a finalist, we get $20,000 to implement our, basically a market, a heavy-hitting marketing campaign to get the masses nationally to vote for us. And if we are selected as one of the winners, then we get $150,000 towards the projects over there. So stay tuned, I mean, we won't know if we're selected to be a finalist until May or June, but, you know, fingers crossed.
Well, once you have that proposal put together, will we have an opportunity to review it? Not for our approval purposes, but just I'm curious what it is that you're gonna be proposing.
The scene which direction you've taken, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure, I will...
Well, I say, that's just like coming up in days.
That's on Monday. Yeah, that's on Monday. Oakland County has, they're like, "Don't worry, we're totally here to help you." And the pre-application process is not...
Too onerous.
Super onerous. I mean, there's gonna have to be some words, but, you know, I can do words. So, yeah, I'm happy to forward on what I, what I put together. And if we are, if we are selected to be a finalist, that application will be...
Much more intense.
Yes, so...
Uh huh, so this is more of a, give them a taste.
Exactly.
And is it, is it something that sounds appealing to them enough?
Right, right, so, fingers crossed.
We have our Lathrop Village as the Garden City presentation that, if you don't, I know I sent it to you with a pile of things when you started, but look at it, because it might be helpful. You could even probably send that, just attach it to the back of a thing, and they can, I don't know that there's anybody in the county that would remember, because I did that presentation for Oakland County Heritage Conference in 2015, maybe?
Was John there yet?
No.
How about outreach to the Historical Society?
Oh, yeah, I talked to Diane for a hot minute, and she was, I had brought this up to the DDA on Friday, and she, Diane Anderson had been there as well, and she was over the moon. So, yes, and I talked to her yesterday, and we're, we're gonna be chatting some more at length, I'm sure, so...
Okay, great.
So, yeah, so we've got that. And then, just the last little update, we are, the DDA is planning a corridor cleanup for Southfield Road for Saturday, June 1st. That is all the details I have just for this very moment, but that's Saturday, June 1st.
This is the second one, right?
No.
This is like a...
This is my understanding that it's been going on for a few years, so...
Yeah, the problem with it, and hopefully we can, we can really market this, the problem is, over the last four or five years, it's been four or five residents, usually the same one, and 30 to 40 church members from the two churches in the community, they bring a big contingent, and it's, it's embarrassing. I mean, because there are no residents there. You would hope that there would be as many residents as, yeah, as non-residents who are working on the project, so we could market it somehow as aggressive as possible.
Get the message out there, maybe that's...
The interesting thing is, on villagers, there were a whole bunch of people talking about, you know, the corridor being dirty, and "I wish somebody would clean it up," and there were some people who kept leaving openings for me to post in there and tag certain people, a group of people saying, "Hey, you said you wanted an opportunity to do this, here's your opportunity."
Right.
So hopefully that will help bring some people, but, yeah, we wanna get residents out there.
In a gentle nudge.
In a gentle nudge fashion, exactly.
Well, and I will say, actually, I guess we do have more updates. So on the 27th, the city and Hortless Gardens and the Children's Garden, they're having an Arbor Day, Earth Day event. an Arbor Day, Earth Day event, there will be a bike parade, decorated, decorated bikes, winners of all ages. The city will be having the Hazardous Waste Day at that same time, from 10 until 2, I believe. So that's, that's on the 27th, and then on the 28th, our new Parks and Rec Coordinator, Chris Kloss, is going to be having a cleanup and a T-ball clinic.
Is there any update on what's going on over in the Georgia Stockers Supply, Mateo the Taylor?
I, nothing, I, you know, I talked to Kelde about it a couple of times, and the general consensus, and what we've been able to figure out, is that they're really just cleaning out the space to wait back for it. I still remain a little on the suspect side.
Yeah, I mean, living next door to it, seeing the stuff that's being taken out of there, it seems a little bit more of just cleaning out.
Right, so, I, you know-
But I didn't mean, I didn't mean from the code enforcement perspective, I meant from the businesses going in there. I just know what I've been told by the previous owner, but-
I've not heard, I spoke to, I spoke to a gentleman about a month ago, and explained, you know, that yes, this site would need to go through the site plan review process, and I spelled that out to the potential property owner, and, and the brokers, and their surveyors, and have not heard back from them at all, so, we won't give up hope. And that, that's officially all I have, unless there's other questions.
Hearing any, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second it. Does the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's adjourned.